I call this meeting the North Adams City Council Order for May 14th. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Bona?
Here.
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Lamb?
Here.
LaForest?
Here.
Moran?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
You have nine votes.
Please stand for the moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, okay. Today's the eighth. All right. Approval of the minutes for April 24th.
Motion to accept.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Paper number 11,652, petition submitted by Council President Bona from Sidney Smithers on behalf of Graylock Works LLC to amend the zoning ordinance. This was in City Council March 13th, and there was a public hearing held without objection. File and move on to the ordinance. Paper number 11,652-1, an ordinance amending Chapter Z entitled zoning, Appendix A entitled use regulation schedule, principal uses 52 and 54. Motion to pass to a second reading in public required by law.
So moved?
Second.
Second. And we'll give it to Harpen. Discussion? Yes?
I have a concern about the clarity of the wording. The first change is listed as delete alcohol in principal uses 52 in I-2 zone districts, but each line encompasses all districts. I think it would be more accurate and make more sense if we just left out the words "in I-2 zone districts," because we're changing that wording for all of the districts, not just for I-2.
Is any further discussion, and that could maybe be an amendment?
I would like to, if nobody's going to correct me on that, I would like to make a motion to amend the ordinance, or amend this motion to remove the words "in I-2 zone districts" from the first part of the change.
So we need a second on that. A second would get it to discussion?
All second.
Okay. Second by Lamb.
I think we are only changing in I-2 zones, though. We're not changing it in all zones. I think that's why that language is there.
And so?
West Counselor LaForest.
And so would a new line be added, 52A, for example? Well, if you were going to delineate in the I-2 zones with the removal of alcohol, would there be another line added to this?
My understanding is that this change overall, if I may, my understanding is that this change overall removes alcohol from principal uses 52 and puts it in principal uses 54, which has the effect of changing what we do in I-2 zones. But I believe the only part of this table that we're changing is the description. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Wilkinson.
I'm totally confused.
Right.
And count on Counselor Buddington for throwing these. No, it's a fair suggestion, so. It's maybe something that hasn't been thought of till right now, so I see a lot of thinking clouds. Yes, Counselor LaForest.
What is the intent of removing alcohol from line 50? I understand the intent of adding it to line 54, but I don't understand the intent of removing it from line 52.
This initially came from us.
Attorney Smithers.
Right. And we don't have any representation here tonight.
I think Jason's right. What he said before is that they just want to change the I-2 zones to be without the wording of alcohol and then added to 54. And Counselor Buddington did say that this is about the wording. This isn't necessarily just about the zoning, right? The zone, the I-2 zone?
Right. I'm saying there's nothing about this actual change that is specific to I-2
Right.
zones.
So that changes it for all the zones?
I mean, if no, any other, yes, Counselor Moran?
It's not permitted in the other zones. If you look, if you're looking at 52, it's permitted, it's not permitted in an I-2 zone, and it's not permitted actually anywhere, only in an I-1 and a
AP-1.
AP-1 with special permit.
So this actually changes I-1 and I?
AP-1.
Can't read it on my computer. Oh, IP, yeah.
It's like a haiku.
I want to question, question the mayor. Are you familiar with this? Like, is there, we postpone this for more clarity, or?
I received the same communication. I think I actually, I received an inquiry prior to this coming in indicating that this was going to be coming. Did that come through your office? Sorry.
Fix the mic, please. Fix the mic.
Sorry about that. That this came in through Attorney Smithers, and it was the Graylock Works that organized this. I believe the intent is to allow for alcohol production at their facility. So that's the purpose of having brought this forward. I don't know if that clarifies.
Yes, Counselor Lamb?
I guess I just don't understand why we would remove it from another section.
If we don't.
To just add, like, is there any reason to remove it if we're adding it just to the other one?
Go ahead.
I think because, my guess is because it would be confusing to have alcohol listed on two lines with different permitting requirements.
We, oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Counsel Harpen and Counsel LaForest, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Okay, Counsel Harpen first.
Do we know specifically that they are only in I-2? I mean, maybe it's a huge building. Is it just I-2, or is it possibly the I-1 and the IP as well? I don't know. I mean, maybe that's something we have to solve, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
It's all I-2.
Okay.
Counsel LaForest?
So I guess we're all confused, and so either it adds another line to 50, you know, a sub-line to line 52, 52A, to clarify removing alcohol from just the I-2 zone.
Counsel Cohen.
I don't know if we should, I'm sorry, I wasn't quite done, but I
Go ahead, no.
Not articulating myself very well. I don't know if this needs to be referred back to the planning board for clarification, or do we amend the language here and put it out for another reading?
Counselor Cohen, and then I'll respond.
If we add alcohol to line 54 as well, then you're also adding that to I-1 and IP zone, too. So I do think this needs to be, either we need somebody here for clarification, or we need to give this back to the planning board.
I mean, my opinion, obviously myself and other councilors, it's a question. And I think to try to work through this tonight without having the answers and trying to figure them out ourselves, and that's why I don't, to the mayor, I don't believe there's any immediate need for this. Do you see?
This is table-setting, for lack of a better word, for getting them where they need to go. I don't have, I don't have information on timeframe, but
Right.
if it's not clear, it's going to need to be clarified.
My suggestion, one, would be to maybe consider, we can have another committee meeting, wherever that belongs, or also getting an opinion from the solicitor, you know, as a legal opinion, because we're talking about two ordinances or two districts that might be overlapping. So go ahead.
So just for the record, I have no objection to them manufacturing alcohol on the site. It's just a matter of, you know, articulating the ordinance.
Counsel Buddington, your motion is currently what's on the table. I don't know, well, your amendment to the motion. I don't know if we should add to that about referring it to a committee for further discussion.
Since we're not, since we don't know that there's an immediate rush, I'd be happier to refer it as necessary rather than pass it to a second reading at this point, just to save time in the long run.
Send yours, and then I could resend mine.
Oh, do I need to resend mine first?
You can, yeah, if you rescind yours, and then
Really? Just backtrack? Okay. I'll resend my motion.
Okay.
And I will resend my motion to adopt, or to, yeah, publish.
So currently, back what's on the table is the motion that's right in front of us.
There is no motion in front of us. It's just the paper.
Oh, you're right, so.
Motion to refer to city solicitor for clarification.
Yeah, I, oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I just want to mention, I think this was already here at the city council, like, a month ago, right? And we might have had the same information that we have now, and we referred it to the planning board. The planning board had a joint meeting with the city council and the planning board together about this, and they recommended that we approve it. So, I mean, I would hope that the planning board has already gone through some of these questions. I know I was at that joint meeting, and we heard what the expectations were for this and what they wanted to use it for, and then we were pretty much dismissed. But I'm thinking that the planning board, and I'm hoping that they, you know, have the knowledge to already, they have more knowledge than I do, to recommend this to be approved. So, I mean, I don't feel as though we should send it to the solicitor. If anything, maybe back to the planning board if you feel you need more clarification.
Counsel Cohen.
Maybe this is just me not understanding what these zones are, but if we're changing the wording on this, it would be manufacturing, processing, printing, packaging, finishing, or assembling of components, or goods, or alcohol? Is that, they'd be adding alcohol to that? So we're adding that, since it's wording, to three zones. This isn't just specific to I-2. So I just don't feel comfortable
Yes, count, oh, sorry.
I don't feel comfortable doing it without more clarification as to why those two zones are going to be included in that, if that's not what this is about.
I just want to insert, we don't have a motion on the table, like, to be discussing.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
So I made a motion, and no one seconded.
I'll second Counseler Bona's.
No, we need a second to Counsel Lamb's motions.
Thank you.
Are you seconding that motion?
No.
Oh, sorry.
He's following up.
See, my bad ear.
I thought somebody did.
Yes, Counsel Wilkinson.
I also attended all those meetings, and the reasons why the alcohol wasn't included in the first place where it was presented, they never really got into the nitty-gritty of this. So I can't just say that we have to rely on, though they're very knowledgeable about all this stuff, I can't say we can just have to rely on they did their due diligence, because while I was there, I never heard it discussed. So I think it needs to go to the city solicitor personally. I think it's, to send it back to the planning board at this point would be, they would discuss it, prove it or not approve it, back to a joint meeting. I mean, it just kind of belabor's the process when we might be able to get some clarification from the city solicitor.
Counsel Buddington.
I think it would be helpful if we can just ask Mr. Smithers to clarify what he intended with this, since he seems to be the one who originated this language. If we're looking for intent, that probably would be helpful.
Possible the city solicitor could contact and clarify that with him. Yes, Counsel LaForest.
Did Counselor Wilkinson second the motion to refer to the solicitor?
One of the two of us did.
Counsel Harpen did.
Yeah, me, either one of us, I think.
Thank you. I was just discussing.
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure. So we do have a second to the motion?
We do have a second, yes.
Okay.
I'll let go Counselor Wilkinson. He's right on target.
Yes, Counsel LaForest.
I agree also, and I just want to say, you know, if this had to be held up in court, it wouldn't be the planning board that would be defending the ordinance. It would be the solicitor. So I would agree that it should go to the solicitor. And I think the intent of the ordinance change was discussed, but I don't remember the specific language being discussed. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Smithers was not at the planning board session, so they didn't have an opportunity to, I was at the meeting also, Counsel Wilkinson, and Attorney Smithers was not present, and neither was the representative of Graylock Works. So there wasn't an opportunity to, you know, to question them.
Just for clarification, the representative did show up right before we started discussing, but Smithers was not there.
All right, all right.
Yeah.
So currently, on the floor, we have a motion to refer this to the city solicitor. And any other discussion from the councilors, any from the public?
Mr. President, if I may, I would suggest respectfully that rather than this being a solicitor item, this is clarification through the requesting attorney, rather than the city incurring the solicitor expense. I think we can get the clarification, and whether that has to go through, whether that then has to go back through planning or not, we can make that determination. But I, it's seeming to me that getting the solicitor involved to ask a clarifying question when the party was not there to respond to these questions and provide that clarification at the planning board process, it seems a little backwards to me.
Another suggestion would be, since the letter came to me to put on the agendas, that I can contact Attorney Smithers, ask the questions that we need cleared, and then maybe see if he can also attend the next meeting to answer our questions then. Just throwing
If that's the, it makes the most sense for intent, then, you know, I don't want to rescind that until
I understand.
There's a general consensus that that's the way we want to go.
But, and at the same time, I feel our solicitor can also be communicating with, and then we're going to get a sort of an official opinion from our guide. So currently, we still stand with a motion to refer this to the city solicitor.
Does it feel like generally we would be comfortable with going to Smithers instead?
We're postponing to get a chance.
Or you had to invite?
Yes, Counsel Cohen.
I'm comfortable with any clarification that there may be, and if that means that we're not incurring costs with an answer, then I'm fine with that.
And I would agree. Counsel LaForest.
Counsel Harpen?
Yeah, I think there could be multiple steps here. I mean, we can get Attorney Smithers here at the next meeting, and maybe he can clarify for all of us. If we're still not clarified at that point, then we can go to the next step and, you know, consult the lawyer or solicitor or whatever, consult the planning board. But I don't think we need to directly go to the solicitor at this point. Maybe there's a few other options prior to that.
So all that being said, I'll rescind my
Okay, so we have another rescind, and we need a new motion. Maybe, would we just be postponing this?
Yes.
Motion to postpone till we get further clarification?
Second?
I didn't make that
Oh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Three seconds.
Buddington and Cohen.
Can I also request that we get a key, or where we can find the key, so I can look up what these zones mean as well, to the clerk, please?
Any discussion on that? Any discussion from the public?
Should we set a return date?
What's that?
Should we set a return date?
I would try to do it in the next meeting. Clarification from, yeah. And so, all in favor?
I.
Oppose? Motion passes. Paper number 11,646-C, communication from the planning board, sharing a joint public hearing amending the marijuana zoning ordinance. Without objection, set a public hearing for May 14th at 5:30. Paper number 11,662, mayor's communication number 24, requesting the appropriation of $5,000 from Certified Free Cash for zoning ordinance revisions. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor?
Thank you. I will summarize the communication for the group. Recently, we received through Berkshire Regional Planning what's called a District Local Technical Assistance, or DLTA, grant in the amount of $10,000 to support a zoning update project. We've talked in this body previously about efforts to update zoning. We just had a perfect example of why updating and clarifying our zoning process is beneficial for the city. Working with BRPC, we've come up with a menu of sort of priority items for addressing through the zoning update. Those would run more than the $10,000 of the grant. So in talking with my team, talking with Larissa Bernstein, who's been the contact, we believe that bringing $5,000 of city money to bear along with the $10,000 from BRPC will allow us to tackle more of those items. Subsequent to that conversation, we were informed that there is a grant through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs that would provide us an additional $50,000 if awarded to really do even more items on this zoning priority list. So the potential at this moment is to get $60,000 of zoning grant support for a $5,000 city investment, and I would offer that that's a reasonable return on that investment. So I have included with the communication an order of appropriation from Certified Free Cash to the ordinance revision account in the amount of $5,000, and would request council adoption of the same. Thank you.
Paper number 11,662, an order appropriating the sum of $5,000 from Certified Free Cash to unclassified ordinance revision. Motion to adopt the order.
We'll do it up.
A whole bunch there.
Second.
Wilkinson and Lamb. We got to give you game buzzers.
Need gongs. I want a gong.
And we're into discussion. Yeah, any discussion? Yes, Counsel Buddington.
I'd just like to say, I'm particularly happy, just personally, to see this moved to getting things in GIS format. I've found in the past, it's really hard to look at our zoning ordinances and answer the question, what applies in this particular lot, and having this as GIS will open up a lot of possibilities to make access a lot easier to our zoning.
Other councilors? Yes, Counsel Cohen.
This, through the chair to the mayor, do we have specific priorities that we would be using the money for? Like, is there something that you particularly would like to be moving forward quicker?
I think the communication from Berkshire Regional Planning that's included with your packet is a good outline and a good overlay. Some additional things that, so use within district would be things alike. Could we adopt some priority development areas? So some overlays for economic development opportunities, and there are different categories of those that BRPC can advise us on. We can look at pending the approval of legislation at the state level, how we incorporate things like short-term rental into our zoning as an opportunity. So there are a couple, this is a menu, and then there may be a few others as we go forward. And then the full scope, again, is going to depend on, are we talking about a $10,000 project, a $15,000 project, or a $65,000 project? And that's going to give us different levels of opportunity. But the list as it's laid out from BRPC really is the key, and starting with, as Counselor Buddington noted, the GIS formatting, and then the use, the use categories. One other one, and I don't remember if this is in their list, but using this as an opportunity to clarify and rationalize some of our parking ordinances as well would be a priority.
Thank you.
Yes, Counsel Lamb?
Through the chair to the mayor, any sense on the competitiveness for that $50,000 grant piece?
I just know that there's some out there that we know are highly competitive.
No, honestly, this is one that came at the recommendation of BRPC, so they felt we would be a strong candidate. And we had already had internal conversations about coming to the council with a $5,000 request. That is, that's more than the match requirement. So if we had $12,500, so the $10,000 from DLTA, which is allowable, and if the city put in $2,500, we would satisfy the match requirement, the minimum match requirement for this grant program. But I think there's a little bit of extra, shows that we're serious, shows that we've got a little more skin in the game, and may help with our competitiveness in securing the grant. Again, I don't want to say it's guaranteed. I don't want to share any undue confidence, but I think it's a reasonable chance that we'll be able to bite off this whole project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? I'll look. Not hearing any other discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Buddington?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
LaForest?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Motion to hear.
Thank you.
Paper number 11,663, mayor's communication number 25, requesting a review of the transfer station operations for FY 2019. Without objection, to file the communication. Mayor?
Thank you very much. This presentation that Mr. Canales is about to provide you was previously given to the Public Services Committee of the council, I believe it was last Monday, April 30th. It is an update on some plans for budget and operations for the transfer station for fiscal year 2019. I'll also mention that during the Finance Committee budget hearing held two or three weeks ago, when we were talking about public services and the transfer station, some of these issues came up, and there was a really good, robust discussion. So between what came up at public services and what was presented to the budget hearing, we felt this was a good time, and Counsel Moran also requested that the city provide this. So this felt like the time and the venue to put that in front of you for the purposes of an update. So I would ask your indulgence to have Mr. Canales give you an update.
That's why you guys sit on that side.
That's right.
We'll make room.
Just thinking that.
So as the mayor said, we did a presentation on April 30th of 2018 to the Public Service Committee to go over the transfer station operation. The city of North Adams is a pay-as-you-thrown community. We use unit-based pricing system for disposal of trash for residents. The purchase price of a trash bag and trash coming over the scale, and the cost of waste collection, less the users throw away, the less they pay. So, you know, it's a pretty simple setup up there. But we've been challenged in the last couple of years, as we've been talking ever since we had competition open up in Vermont, on how we would continually try to right-size how the transfer station runs. Stickers are available to residents, non-residents, and pickup trucks, vans, Stickers are available to residents, non-residents, and pickup trucks, vans, cars are allowed, but packers will no longer be allowed at the transfer station. It was discussed last year, we have been approved for a small transfer station operation instead of large, which reduced the engineering costs overall for the transfer station. Some of the changes that we want to make for '19 is we wanted to try to simplify the operation up there and try to create a user fee, so anybody going up to the transfer station without a permit wouldn't be turned away, wouldn't be sent back down to the city hall, that we control the traffic flow and create a sticker monitoring program, and that we'd adjust the hours of operations. User fee. When people go up to the transfer station right now, they're supposed to have a sticker. If they don't have a sticker, especially on Saturdays, to put somebody in line to try to buy a sticker up there when you have a line of vehicles and everything, is really slows it down. So we didn't want to have to slow it down anymore. So we actually had some joint meetings between, with the staff up there, and the scale operators, the auditor's office, the health office, and myself. And one of the things that was brought up by one of the employees was, why don't we just offer a user fee for anybody that shows up without a sticker at the transfer station? So, this would allow people, not only that, but it would allow us to get rid of the temporary stickers. If you're only going to be here for a month and you just want to stop up once or twice, will you pay the additional user fee? We debated the user fee around internally. Originally, we had brought up a user fee of $6, and at further discussion at the Public Service Committee, we thought that the user fee should be set at $10. So somebody showing up would pay this in addition to what it would cost them. So if they had to go over the scale for the $6 minimum, it'd cost them $16 that day to go over, and if they had a sticker, it would just be $6, but they would have bought a $60 sticker, so.
How much is a full-year sticker?
80 for non-residents, 85 for commercial. One of the key things we talked about was creating a weekday traffic flow and how we could monitor the stickers. So what we came up with is that during the weekdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, that we would have all scale and bag individuals showing up at the transfer station go over the scale. This would allow the scale operator to check the cars that are coming and make sure that they have stickers. People with bags would then turn and would go through, deposit their trash, their recyclables, and then exit without going back over the scale. People that are going to the scale would continue over the scale and then come back to be weighed and billed. When I was up there, I did, we did numerous days, but the first two days I was up there for two hours each day. I witnessed 13 vehicles that had no stickers. So, you know, at $60, that's $780 worth of stickers that weren't purchased and people were using. In addition, there were people dumping without bags, and every time somebody dumps without bags, it costs everybody else, because you'll see later where it's broken out how much most of the operation up there is just getting rid of our trash, and there is a cost to that. Saturdays is slightly different. Anybody that's been up at the transfer station knows that Saturday, well, it's not necessarily our busiest day as far as total volume of trash that we take in, or total weight of trash we take in, because especially Tuesdays, we get a lot of small contractors that bring up a lot of debris, so there's a lot of weight. The amount of vehicles coming to the transfer station on Saturday is significantly more than any other day, at least three to four times as many. So, you know, for example, there are some days on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday that we can see as few as 20 to 25 vehicles go over the scale. We'll see 80-plus on a Saturday. So, we said there's no way we can have the bags and the scale, people going over the scale. So on Saturdays, we'll have the people, channel created, so that people that are dropping bags would go up the channel, and we would have one employee there that would be checking the bags, checking for stickers, checking that they had the proper bags, and then leaving while the scale traffic go over the scale. Now, what this does is that weekdays, we would only have two employees up at the transfer station, a scale operator and the foreman up there who is packing the loads and the rest. On Saturday, we'd have the scale operator, the foreman, and we'd have one employee from the DPW come up. So this will essentially allow us to drop one position up at the transfer station. Last year, we had proposed to reduce the hours halftime for one person, have them split between the two departments, but without looking at the flow and how we can make it work, we were never really able to implement that. This time, we took our time, we've been up there numerous days, we've been up there on the weekend, I know the mayor came up one weekend, we looked at how the different patterns worked, and we think this is the best setup going forward. One of the things that we realized was that if we were going to go to Tuesday through Friday of only having two employees, one the foreman and one the scale operator, is that we really wanted to minimize the amount of times that they are transferring loads and everything else while the public's up there. So one of the recommendations that we have is that the transfer station would close at 2:00 to the general public, allowing the last hour for the foreman to clean, clear the bins, empty them out, and get ready for the next day. Tuesday through Friday, if we empty at the end of the day, we don't have to make any transfers during the time that the public's up there, creating a much safer work environment while up there. On the weekend, because of the volume, we typically have to switch it out in the middle of the day anyways, and since we have three employees up there, we can do it. We still think we can do it properly on Saturdays without changing any hours on Saturday. Oops. Okay. There we go. Looking at the total expenses, and I changed this so the, let's see. So, those are the breakdown of what it costs us to run the transfer station. Obviously, the biggest cost is waste disposal, $332,000, followed then by the cost of labor up there, $82,000. Total cost is $455,000. So, you know, $410,000 of it is just trash and labor. So, you know, a much better look at that is in a pie chart. You can see that disposal of the waste is 73% of our operation costs. So, you know, when we talk about people throwing a bag, roughly you can basically say that 73 cents for the cost of a bag is just going to get rid of the trash, period. So when people dump without paying for a bag, it takes now three more people to come up just to equate back to that one bag that was, or three more bags to be thrown in to get back to that. So, you know, and this cost is only going to accelerate, the cost of waste disposal is continuing to grow. And then the other largest share is obviously our labor. And as you can see, the rest of the costs are very minuscule, less than 1%. So the whole system is a pay-as-you-thrown system. We're estimating that the tonnage for next year will be 4,000 tons, which means we would have to have a base charge of $113.80 per ton. How that equates back to the bags is the bags would stay the same, because we calculate back the average, how much weight an average bag can hold back to the tonnage, and it tells us, and then we round it off, and it tells us that we can remain the cost at $1 for the small, $2.25 for the large. The current rate is $13.64 with a $60 sticker. The proposed rate we had, and I'll get a little more into that in one second, was that it would basically go up to, will go up to $13.80, or 16 cents more per ton. So for the average family, the cost would be about 50 cents for the year. Each American discards about 4.4 pounds of trash a day, or 3.2 tons for a family of four. That's based on the EPA numbers. Due to the fact that there's such a small increase this year, we think that we can just leave the rate as is. We think that by incorporating in the user fee, we'll be able to collect a little bit of additional money. So we think that we're recommending that the rate this year just remain the same. And then we'll reanalyze it next year, because we know we're going to have to adjust it next year, because our contract with our hauler is going to go up 2.07%. So we'll have to make an adjustment this year, but with the staff changes and the other changes that we made, right now, we are recommending that there are no changes to it. I did present a breakdown budget sheet of how we calculate out everything. It's a little hard to see, and if any counselors want, I can send it to you, but it just explains how we break it down, how it costs, and what we take in for total amounts. Sometimes people get a little confused. I remind people that everything we collect from the stickers goes into a capital fund, and the rest of the costs up there are to cover the operational costs. So at this point, if there's any questions from the council, I'm here to answer them.
Counsel Moran.
I'll just add that, I apologize for not having the minutes, but the Public Service Committee approved all of these changes that you're seeing now, the $10 user fee, the reduced hours, same sticker and scale prices, and the rerouting of traffic flow. So this is what was presented, and through our discussion, this is what we all agreed upon, and it was approved 3 to 0. So, what is presented is exactly what we hashed out, and is what you're seeing in front of you now.
Other counselors? Yes, Counsel Harpyn.
I just have a question about safety. I guess I'm a little concerned. I work in an industrial environment myself, and it's a small industrial environment, so in that environment, you definitely have to rely on the people that you're working with, and you have to feel comfortable that, you know, if there was an emergency that happened, that they can respond to it quickly, and you have a plan set up. So I just want to make sure that they have drills up there, maybe possibly a couple drills, you know, a year. They all are CPR certified, and there's AEDs, and, you know, anything that we can do to make sure that these employees are comfortable being, because it's a huge site, there's a lot of industrial equipment up there, and, you know, I just want them to feel as though they're safe. So, you know, is there anything that you have set up like that?
Overall, we really haven't, but one of the things that is changing is that municipalities are going to be required to go under OSHA standards beginning in the fall. So we're actually looking at setting up standard operating procedures for DPW the rest, and we're going to be requesting from Casella, who is our contractor who takes our waste away, and they run larger facilities, of a sample standard operating procedures, so we can adopt them to our use for our facility. So we are looking at that. One of the big things that was a safety concern is that before, we did a lot of transferring of crates and everything else with the public there, and we feel like getting it down so it only happens on Saturday out of necessity, is that that in and of itself will make for a safer operation. And while the operator is making those changes, the scale operator will be monitoring, so if anything does happen, they can call for, if there's emergency procedures. So we are in the process of developing more robust standard operating procedures.
Other counselors? Yes, Counsel Budington.
A question about recycling. Have haulers also brought recycling to our facility traditionally, as well as garbage?
Yeah.
And we're still allowing haulers today?
Yeah, we're still allowing, they can still buy a sticker for their vehicle, and they can still bring recycling.
Okay.
Other counselors? Counsel Lamb?
I think this is a bigger question. I know I've pinged the mayor's office at least once on it. In terms of the city itself doing recycling, like in the school system, and also, you know, where we have garbage cans around the city, has there been any conversation about that occurring? Just because I know as we're having more conversations around this, I feel like if we're going to continue to call ourselves a green community, that might be something that we should be looking to implement for ourselves.
Well, we can definitely implement it. We have the ability to get rid of it up at the transfer station, so it's just figuring out, right, do you have plastic disposal, bins on Main Street in addition to regular trash? Those are all things that we can incorporate in, and we're more than capable at the transfer station of taking it that way.
I just handed today to Ross Bavory, who's the Green Communities Officer. There's a state grant, and I'm not going to off the top of my head remember which program, I'm sorry, but it does have a couple of categories in it, and the one that I'm most interested in right now is whether we can use that funding for downtown recycling as a first step. But there's a whole constellation of those, and it's going to take, you know, a little bit of study to set the priorities and get things in place, but, yeah.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that's a thing.
Other counselors? I want to just extend a little bit off, and I know I mentioned this during the Finance Committee meeting, but again, I do have a little concern about eliminating the one position. To be clear, you said last year, we were going to, we planned on having a half-time person, and it did end up just being, okay, it ended up being just full-time?
Yeah.
So we had two full-time people. And I get that the, cutting the extra hour off at the end allows that time, basically they're going to hold off all day from trying to do the bulk of any transferring, so that the foreman is not leaving the site unmanned while there's public there. I guess a couple of questions I have on that is, and then, so we are limiting that one person, so if there is that need to transfer that bin because it's full, you said Saturday is not the day, it's the day with the most traffic, but is not the day with the most garbage or trash, because you do get the commercial contractors and stuff that bring up a lot of stuff. So there is that chance that, I don't know what day is the busiest, but that the foreman is going to have to be moving those bins, and I...
If I could clarify for you on that. What fills on Saturday and Sunday are the bins for the trash bags and the recycling. Contractors that come up are putting their trash on the floor and just being pushed in by the front-end loader, and then when they bring large trucks with recycling, they bring it up in the back and dump it in the back area. So on Saturday, because most of our traffic switches, it's almost, it switches. During the week, it's a lot of contractors, small rubbish businesses and the rest that are bringing it up over the scale. So we get a lot more weight in trash coming over the scale, but all we're doing is pushing it into the trailer up there. What fills on Saturday are the bins that, where the bags are thrown. We will not fill up a container on a weekday where the bags are. There's just, there just aren't enough. And if that happens, I shouldn't say it could never happen, but it'll be very seldom that that ever happens. On Saturday, those bins in the lower section constantly have to be emptied, because people are coming up with bags of recycling, and it fills usually around 10:00, 10:30, they have to swap it out, and on a really busy day, they might have to swap it out twice. So you just see a different load, a different customer almost, our primary customer weekday compared to weekend.
I'm not finished with that, but I do have Counsel Publics, I'll hold my stuff off to the end unless it gets said. So, Counsel Wilkinson, and then Mr. Carnamune, I saw your hand up out there, I'll make sure to get to you, okay?
Right, through the chair. The hauler that hauls out the trash after the bin is full, do we pay by the bin, or do we pay a rental on the bin itself, or just the tonnage?
We own the bins.
Pardon me?
We own the bins.
We own the bin.
Yeah.
On Saturdays, couldn't we put extra bins up there? And that way, they wouldn't have to be removed while we have patrons up there.
It's funny, because we actually mentioned that, the possibility of adding a second recycling bin, whether or not that would be something to do, and then stay open another hour after close for the public, and then swap them out on Saturday. That is something. The bins are about $8,000 apiece, and we need to actually replace the four that are up there right now. They're getting in very poor condition. So one of the thoughts was, is would you, instead of having four, go to seven, one additional trash, and one additional paper, and one additional plastic? And then that would allow, you'd basically close the doors on one until the other one's full, then shut that one. full, then shut that one and do the others. That is an option that we might be coming back to the committee asking for money in order to buy new bins.
It seems to make much safer environment when you're, I've been up there, I go up there usually every Saturday, and when they're trying to change the bins out, first, the guy has to wait because there's a line of cars, and then people just inconsiderate. So he's trying to get the bin out, but they're still driving their car right up because they don't want to, they don't want to have to walk anywhere with the trash, and you're asking for an accident. You truly are. I've been there close calls. I had to move my car twice once, and because it was just courtesy thing. He couldn't get, he couldn't get in there to take the bins out because it was a constant flow of traffic.
Right. And we, I was actually up there and watched a pickup truck pull up on the grass to get around them because they wouldn't wait.
So to just continue with what I was saying, so one, and we've talked about this in the past, because I've been on meetings, committees with the transfer station for many years, what is currently up there, if any, for cameras on the site?
There's a number of cameras on the site.
Okay. So can, is the person in the scale room, can they watch those? Are they seeing those at all, or are they just recording?
They're just recording.
Okay. Because I could see, the scale room had a monitor that was overlooking the site that maybe when the foreman was away, that'd be a little, at least one extra eye, but I know they're doing the scales too. And then the other question I have, and it was based off of comments you said, how you caught the one day you were up there, 13 cars without stickers?
Right.
And what was not being done in the past? I mean, I understand they got to go over the scale, but shouldn't the foreman and the other worker that was there sort of been cupping an eye at all on those stickers?
Probably. This was just a refocusing of what we're doing and basically establishing that we are going to monitor the stickers going forward, you know, identifying on the weekday that we would be using the scale operator to do it. Yeah, it's probably something we should have been doing a little before, but we're implementing it now, so part of it is to have people get prepared for the fact that we will be checking and making sure that everybody that's using has current stickers.
And if I may, I would also add that this, that what Mr. Canales did was a function of intention in looking at the traffic flow. So he was specifically standing there, counting cars, watching cars in a way that the scale operator or the foreperson wouldn't necessarily be doing. So it was, it was a function of doing this, doing this look across, and that's not to say we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be doing this as a matter of practice, but those were just in those couple of hours, or however long he was up there, standing by the drive as people were going by.
No, I mean, it's a good catch, and I will, I will say, you know, Mr. Canales has been pretty accurate with past predictions of what has happened and what we should do with the transfer station, and obviously, we're always learning from it because it's constantly changing. The biggest was a few years ago when the plant opened up in Pontle, and I think we were pretty right on with what we expected was going to come from that. But again, the safety concern was my biggest issue, because at this point, you know, I've been up there a couple of times where I've seen, you know, dad goes up with the little kid, and the little kid's out, oh, it's a dump, you know, and you just don't know where those, who's watching what. And I know we've had accidents up there, not too recent, but there were accidents up there in the past by our own city employees, you know, that have happened. So I just, again, I'm stretching, stressing my safety concern of eliminating that one person, not saying it's needed, but it just red flags me a little. Any other counselors? Mr. Cardamino, yes, you have the floor. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, 173 Quincy Street, Robert Cardamino. I noticed that there's 18% of the budget that goes for supplies. What are the supplies they need up there?
18% is labor.
Huh?
18% is labor.
I thought it's, I thought the chunk out there was 18%. You read down.
I'm sorry, it's missed.
It's green.
There's two greens.
A light and a dark.
No, there's two greens.
It's the lower one.
It is confusing.
I'm sorry, the program doesn't. The light green labor is 18%, supplies is 1%. So there's two different shades of green in there.
Well, you know something? You can't distinguish that from here.
Right. Yeah. When I was doing it on my little, on the laptop, you can tell the difference, but up there, you can't.
Well, you could have put some hedge marks or something in there and really flower.
Yeah. But it was, it was shown right here, because I had two tables. This shows that the...
And again, you know, you can hardly read that from here.
Mr. Cardamino, use the microphone.
All right.
Use the microphone.
Anyway, that's, okay, you explain that.
Yes.
My next question is, why are you banning compact trucks?
So we were a large-scale facility up until this year, and we applied to become a small-scale facility, which means you're under 50 tons a day. We have not been over 50 tons for the last three years. We've been averaging about 34 tons. Part of whether you go with the DEP permit is the fact that if a packer shows up, it can bring so much volume that it can trigger where you'd have to close for the day, because once you reach 50 tons, you'd have to close. I'm telling you, we're not allowing packers. We haven't had packers there in the last two years.
Okay.
All the packers have gone and entered into contracts up in Pontle, and they're taking their trash either to Pontle or to Pittsfield. So we're actually saying that we're not taking something that hasn't been coming for the last two years. But technically, now, we can accept them.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cardamino. Mr. Cardamino. Mr. Cardamino. One question, because I know he was talking, but make this the last question, because typically, we don't like going back and forth, okay? So one more question.
There's no back and forth. I've been listening. I ask a question, I listen.
No, I understand, but typically, we don't allow question, answer, question, answer. So just one more question.
Have you ever thought or considered putting, installing an incinerator up the landfill? They have one in Pittsfield, seems to work very well, and maybe that's the direction we should be going.
I can answer that and say, we've talked about everything in the past 25 years, and Pittsfield has an incinerator, and they are, it's private, but yet, the city has had to fund it because it doesn't make enough money.
Right. And I would say that the one thing that is unique about our station is because whether an incinerator or a full transfer station, they can't accept construction waste. We're one of the few that can accept construction waste. So it's one of the few pieces that we have, and I think it makes up for why we have a bunch of contractors that do still continue to use the station.
Any other discussion from, oh, yeah, so we got more people here. Yes, go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Brian Sepians, 113 Pleasant Street. I was just wondering if there's any provision, I know you're watching for people without stickers. Are you watching for people that tend to reuse the city bags or dumping trash into the bin that is not in city bags? I was wondering if you're watching for that as well.
Yeah, we're trying to use the scale operator to check to see that they have bags for each of their individual bags. And then, once we switch to, we'll have the last hour for cleanup, the foreman is also going to be randomly monitoring to make sure that people are throwing the bags, using bags, and not just coming up. So it's not going to be 100%, but it's not going to be 0%, but it will be random times to make sure that people are using it.
Yeah.
And I think just because we're watching, most people will, will do it.
Okay.
There might be some that really try to get sneaky, but we're...
Because I have seen instances where people are using either plain bags or dumping the city bags into the trash bin and then taking the city bag and leaving with it, so.
Yeah.
I have seen that, so.
Yes, and that was witnessed to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Robert Lyons, 17 Gunther Street. Two questions. First, with the time limits, now it is 3 o'clock, however, they shut the scale down and not allow you over at 2:30. When you change the time to 2, is that going to change to 1:30?
No. We're going to shut the scale down at 2. We're going to run the scale right up to 2. Anybody that's in at 2 will be allowed to dump.
Okay.
So we won't be, won't be any 1:30 or anything else.
They were doing it a half hour before.
It's supposed to be 15 minutes, I found out.
I know, I know.
But we're actually going to run the scale right up until 2 o'clock.
Okay.
And we'll then cycle out everybody, and that's when they'll do the transfer.
Okay. And also, I've noticed, I go up to the dump a lot, they've been pulling metal out of the dump area where they push into the bins. Does that metal that they're pulling out go to Atkins to be returned into cash to go back into the system?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, good.
It's through Dobert's.
Oh, that's good.
And we have a trailer up there, so anytime that we can pull metal out, we do, put it in so we can get the cash for that.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Last from the council. Not hearing any. Oops. Were we just discussing all that time? Were, weren't we? So that was it? There is no motion.
I learned a lot.
There we go. All right. Paper number 11,664, Mayor's Communication Number 26, recommending the reappointment of Marilyn DeRosa as a registrar of voters for a term to expire April 1, 2021.
Move to point. Second.
And discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Hoes?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have a procedural question regarding the transfer of $5,000. What happened with that? Did we vote? Okay, sorry, it was a long time ago.
Don't be doing that.
Oh, now, oh, yes, so it was, okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right. And I think we're on to committee reports. And do we have one? Yes, Counsel Harpen.
Yes, so I'd like to give a quarterly report of the North Adams Retirement Board. The North Adams Retirement Board has monthly meetings to discuss all movement and inquiries of the members in the financial position during the previous month. This includes warrants, new members, deceased members, requests for transfers and buybacks. The board met in 2018 on January 23rd, February 20th, March 20th, and April 26th. They meet at 10 o'clock in the Office of the Administrator at 61 Main Street each time. That's where they always meet. I was able to attend the February and April meetings, where I found the board to be meticulous to detail of each item on the agenda. The meetings I've attended contain extensive discussion and questions regarding each issue, so I have a lot of confidence, and I think they're a great board. The March meeting was a public meeting to discuss a 3% cost of living increase on the first $13,000, which will go into effect on July 1st. It was approved. In April, just a couple of weeks ago, the DeBurlow Group, which is our investment advisor, came from Boston to give a recap of the portfolio, and just some highlighted bullet points here. The market value of the portfolio as of March 31, 2018 is $64.7 million. The DeBurlow Group have been our investment advisors for 30 years. The portfolio is 75% funded. The total portfolio's annualized return since inception, which was December 31, 1984, is 9.64%. And the North Adams Retirement System consists of 331 active members, 228 retirees and beneficiaries.
Okay, those, that was a liaison report, but we'll accept it.
Okay.
Any other committee reports? Yes, Counsel.
It's not a, you mean, community calendar and events? That's where we're at right now, right?
Yeah, well...
You said committee reports, I think that was probably why.
That's, yeah, that's why I went ahead.
Well, yeah, we got some different things up here, so I just maxed that off.
I just wanted to mention that the Public Safety Committee is meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM here in council chambers to further discuss the gun range. So if anyone's able to attend, come on down.
Yeah, Counsel Wilkinson.
Since we're discussing upcoming meetings, the next meeting, and hopefully, the last of the Finance Committee will be on Thursday, May 31st at 6 o'clock right here in council chambers. We're going to be discussing the public school system, the Miss Can School system, and trying to wrap up the entire budget for presentation to the council. And I urge anybody that has any interest in any of those categories to please come and give us your input.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Harpen.
The Ad-Hoc Committee on the City Clerk's Office, we've just settled on a meeting date for next Wednesday, May 16th at 5:30 here in the City Council Chambers.
Okay, thank you. Any other events, community events, public, yes? Oh, sorry, Counsel Moran.
Northern Berkshire Community Coalition Monthly Forum, Friday, May 11th, from 10 to noon at The Green on 87 Main Street. And this month is Live, Work, and Play, Creating Outdoor Recreation Opportunities for Community and Economy. So that'll be Friday, the 11th.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Oh, yes, Counsel Hawkins.
One more. The Be Fair Walk for Independence is, it's actually in June, but it's Saturday, June 23rd. You can register now on their website, information on their Facebook page.
Thank you. Any other counselors? There you go. Now you're up.
Roger Urban, Action Street, North Adams. The good Lord has finally allowed us to do our work up at the cemetery for two days. We have started. We work every Wednesday and every other Saturday. This coming Saturday is an off day, so the following one would be, we'd like to invite all of you to come up and take a look at what we're doing and how we do it, as well as anybody from the public that would like to see what's being done. Thank you.
What time, Roger? What time?
Here you go.
Any other community events? Not hearing any. We will move on to open forum. Anyone wish to speak on open forum? Yes. Name and address for the record, please. Two minutes.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. I just want to inform the council that I've been collecting signatures in opposition to this ban to bag, one-use bags, and I've been doing very well considering I went to Walmart and asked if I could get permission in their parking lot. Well, the manager took a couple of days. He was in favor of it. We were talking quite a while, and he went to corporate, and corporate brought it back and says, no, it's only ballot questions. Otherwise, I could give you a couple hundred, or five or 600 signatures with people that are opposed to this bag ban. And I'm going to present, I'm going to keep going until it goes to the council. So I will present it that somewhere along the line. I hope I can get a few more signatures. I got quite a few already, but it's a little difficult when you got to just at random beat people. But there are a couple of businesses that gave me permission, but they don't have the volume that Walmart does. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Not hearing any other. We will move on to mayor's concerns.
Thank you. A couple of quick items. First, I want to officially announce that there will be a Charter Spectrum Performance Evaluation Hearing on Monday, May 21st, from 6 to 8 PM. That meeting will be held at the American Legion. The performance evaluation hearing is something that is an authority granted to me as the issuing authority under the cable license. These hearings have three purposes according to the contract. One, to review the licensee's compliance with the terms and conditions of the license, with an emphasis on the subscriber network operation, customer service, and complaint response, and PEG access channels. So those are the public education and governance, government channels, including the one that people at home are watching right now, as well as facilities and support. We can hold a hearing to review current technological developments in the cable television field, such as decryption technology, and then we can hold one to hear comments, suggestions, and/or complaints from the public. So there are options, three options for public comment. One, come to the meeting and have your voice heard. Anyone who would care to submit written comments in advance may do so by mailing them to my office, City Hall 10 Main Street, and anyone who would like to may submit them via email to Michelle Ls in my office. I'll also note that, as was noted, was presented to the council at the last meeting, this is Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. We presented a citation to that effect at the last meeting. We presented a citation to that effect at the last meeting. And in support of that, there will be a rally and standout this Thursday, April 10, from 4 to 6 p.m. on City Hall lawn. That's being organized by the Northern Berkshire Systems of Care Community. I want to acknowledge their, their efforts and make the community aware of that event. I want to mention two items with regard to the North Adams Public Schools. The first is there's an organization called the Eos Foundation that recently issued a report on breakfast in the classroom participation rates in Massachusetts. And these are specifically what are known as after-the-bell breakfast in classroom programs. And the city of North Adams went from 17th ranked in the state last year to 10th this year with about 64% of students in the district participating. So I want to acknowledge the work of our food service staff, particularly Corey Nicholas as the director, as well as the partnership that this represents because this is breakfast in the classroom with the teachers who participate. I want to highlight that there are sort of four basic benefits of after-the-bell breakfast. We know that students who've eaten breakfast are more prepared to learn, so it supports learning readiness. It ensures that all students have access to a free breakfast, that no one has to arrive early for pre-class breakfast and have to worry about being shut out of breakfast because of a late bus or a late ride. And then no one is singled out as needing breakfast. It's available to all students. So I'm really pleased with the performance that we've seen with the school district and I know they're committed to seeing that participation rate rise. I also want to acknowledge that today is Teacher Appreciation Day and this is also Teacher Appreciation Week. So I want to acknowledge the educators who serve our students in the North Adams Public Schools. I want to acknowledge the educators at McCann and I want to acknowledge the educators at Bart who teach students from North Adams. I want to thank them all for their service. While I'm giving thanks and congratulations, I want to acknowledge the MCLA Class of 2018. Their commencement is this Saturday. I want to issue a preemptive welcome to family members and friends who'll be here cheering on the graduates and spending some time in our community. I want to also offer congratulations to the honorary degree recipients, Representative Smitty Pignatelli, Denise Richidello, and posthumously to Gail Curriti. And Stephanie Wilson, who is an astronaut born and, I'm sorry, raised in Pittsfield, will be the keynote speaker. I want to mention that on May 17, that's next Wednesday, next Thursday, sorry, is the Northern Berkshire United Way Spirit of Caring Award Presentation. That will be at the Church Street Center at MCLA. This is the inaugural awards presentation and the United Way will be honoring Dick Alkem bright, Christine Hoyt, and L. Nelson. Also coming up on Wednesday, May 23, beginning at 6 p.m., the North Adams Ambulance Service will be celebrating their 40th anniversary and the rebranding of their organization following the merger with Village Ambulance. That'll be held at Mass MoCA and this is part of EMS Week. Mentioned this at the last meeting, but the Mayor's Fitness Challenge kicks off on Saturday, May 19. Eagle Street will be closed from 11 to 2. This will be organized concurrent with Bike Fest. And I want to, on the bike subject, acknowledge that there is an opportunity for participants in the fitness challenge to earn some early points on Friday, May 18, which is Bike to Work Day. Finally, I want to just make one note about the retail marijuana licensing process. I think it was two meetings ago, we talked about the fact that there was a public meeting that was, that was being held. And I want to clarify the purpose and intent of those meetings because a question came up about this last week. Those public meetings are organized by the entities who are interested in establishing businesses here. They organize them at their own expense. They are responsible for all, all work related to those meetings. They're not, they're not city meetings, they're not public hearings. The city does not have a role in those. So the, the entity is responsible for posting the meeting, as, as with any other public meeting, they're responsible for any public, public notice in the newspaper as well as any communication to abutters. And these are all spelled out in the requirements of the State Cannabis Control Commission. And again, I just want to be really, really clear, when an entity chooses to hold one of those meetings, that is a meeting of their, of themselves. It's not, it's not a city meeting, so it's not a, a public hearing in the way that the next ordinance revision will be, will be a public hearing of the, of the planning board and the council. So important for the community to understand that, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to liaison updates and counselors' concerns. Counsel Harpen, you got to repeat yours. No, just kidding. Any other counselors' concerns? Not hearing any. Oh, yes. Sorry.
Well, I just have a question. We had the communication from the planning board requesting a joint hearing to amend marijuana ordinances again. And I know we've been discussing and processing this for five months, but there was no indication what the amendment was. Is that something we know prior to the joint hearing?
Yes, yes, Counsel Wilkinson.
It was a matter of, we're coming down to the wire and there were two additional warrants presented, that the mayor had presented, that they had sent to the city solicitor, they had come back, but they were still gone when we were voting on the, the actual ordinance. And the mayor suggested that it was better for us to take care of the main business and we could always come back later.
You can probably explain it better than I can.
If I, if I may, this was the, this was the list of, of recommendations from Berkshire Regional Planning. There were about a dozen of those that they made because of disconnects between the preliminary state regs and the final, the final approved regs. So there's just a few clarifications of language. I believe that's what that refers to.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselors? Motion to adjourn. Oh, whoops, oh, sorry. Oh, my God, I'm jumping ahead here.
Anxious.
All right, we have a license from Sanford and Kidd for a motion to grant a license.
Motion to grant.
I have to abstain due to conflict.
Second.
So, hold on, we have a motion from Paul, Counsel Harpen, and a second from Counsel Wilkinson. And I have to abstain, all in favor.
Hi.
Pose. Motion passes. And I don't think we have any correspondence.
Nope.
And now, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?